Sorenson.
Here.
What?
Here.
We have a call.
And before we get underway, just want to remind everyone if you can speak directly into your microphone, so have them centered straight in front of you. If there are people at home who are having trouble hearing us.
... world but to companion each other honestly through them. Bless the resources gathered here to our shared action and accountability that we may face head on what is aching for our attention.
Second. Having a motion by Doug, second by Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
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 That is approved.
We do. I didn't see an invoice or paid out, and maybe it was because I just felt...
This is the first month that we're doing it?
Yes. Darren has not seen any invoice from me.
Okay, will that be a separate discussion? Go ahead.
I hate for this time to go by without us acknowledging the annual report from the City of Ripon Police Department. I'm so grateful for their service to this community and the team that we have serving our community. Excuse me, for all of us, that it is impressive to see their outreach to the community and grateful that we have such a great report. I assume that it'll be, you know, I mean, I know that it is with the packet of council things, so anyone can look at it on the website.
Hearing none. All is in favor of accepting informal reports from standing committee and staff as published, say aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed are approved. Next is the consent calendar as published.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as published.
I'll second.
Motion by Doug, second by John. Any discussion on the consent calendar? That is approved. All right, moving into our first agenda item, this is the housing study and market analysis report. We have Mark Stewart from Vierbecker.
If my computer will.
All right, good evening. Thank you. A couple of years ago, we came back and started making some amendments to it with new data, new data from Adam in the city, and then as well as new data from various government down the line with, since we started this process a couple of years ago till right now. And then that starts with the demographics. And so, the Department of Administration, after the 2010 census, came up with statistics and projections out for population, and they also did household or households and housing unit projections. And that's the data we used for the 2022 project. And at the time of redoing the housing study in '24, it was still the SAM data. Well, we can also look at the census data, and we had 2020, we had new census. Well, it took the census to come out a few years after that with their actual data, and 2022 was some of their new data. And then they do have something called the American Community Nation in '24, in November of '24, with 2023 data. So everything's like a year behind with that. And so as we're compiling that information into this, the Department of Administration, then, and like I said, these are from 2013 based off of 2010 data from the census, and you can see that, for the most part, the city is, is on a, overall a decline for the most part, and that's a projection by the Department of Administration. So then when we look at what they redid in 2024 using the 2020 census data and the other data they used, and that's actually a 19% decline in population. So in the 10 years, 12 years that they did their population estimates, the state has said, no, we've revised that, and instead of having really a no-growth projection, it's a 19% decrease. So there's a little bit of explanation there, because this isn't the only community where the Department of Administration had this, this moment of clarity, for lack of a better term. But on a whole, the state of Wisconsin is going to lose, by their projections, 200,000 people in the next 20 years, or in the next 30 years. And in that timeframe, they have to decide, so who's gonna, who's losing population, who's winning on the population end of things. So the way the state handles it is they project the state's population first, then they go to county, and then they go to municipalities after that. So they trickle their way down, instead of the opposite, what are each individual community's doing, and build it up that way. And so pretty much, they got to find ways to build up that 200,000-person loss. And what ended up happening is Ripon is on that shortlist, and there's a lot of other communities, mostly rural, that are on that shortlist, rural counties. All the counties in the northwestern part of the state are all showing a decline in population based on these projections. But what they look at is, they only look at two things. So they don't look at in-migration, out-migration, and they don't look at building permit data. So those are other aspects that we take into account when we're doing this. We have to look at, you know, these are state demographers that do this. Kind of at their word. But when we see something like this, when you go from flatline to 19% decline, it just seems kind of funny, so. So what we did, and Adam and I discussed this, we discussed it internally at Vierbecker, and based on existing trends of properties and buying of houses and projected rental properties taking root, we kind of came up with this kind of a steady, slow increase. And this actually works out to be just over a 2% increase over the next three or 30 years, well, really the next 20, 15 years, because I go up to 2040. Because anything further than that, you're really kind of, you're shooting in the wind. So over the next 15 years, we're looking at a 2% increase. Control, and that's, in essence, the essence of this housing study is where do we go from here? But I wanted to kind of bring it back and just kind of have you understand where the demographics fall and what causes us to have a... ... with that. And so this chart here shows the comparison of the three data studies. So the one in the low end is the 2025 estimate from the State Department of Administration, the one in the middle, their population projections back in 2013, and then the top line, that's ours. So we're not saying we're going to grow at the opposite of the 19% decrease of 20% going upwards, but really staying a little bit ahead to show a little bit of growth. And ideally, we'd like to grow even faster than that, but that's kind of that next step.
Oh, real quick, under your demographics, your projection, where do you state what you use? I know you just said it verbally. Is that in the report?
It is in the report, but not, so what we look at is, we look at all the same things. So birth rates, but then the big thing we have is we have permit data that we look at and use from the city. We have trends in housing, and we look at the fact that there's not a community in Wisconsin that does not need housing. Every community needs housing, nobody has an influx of it. And then we go back to the fact of, when we originally did the study, that the housing market has a zero vacancy rate in Ripon, and even over the two, three years, two and a half years since our first study, that vacancy rate is still in that low range, under five. And in the study, we outlined that 5% to 8% is a healthy vacancy rate. And that's both rental housing and owner-occupied housing. And right now, Ripon is far below that. Ripon is in the 0% to 1% category, even with the building that's gone on in the last couple of years. And from that aspect, if we can access property, if we can, you know, have agreements with developers and attract people here, there's an opportunity for that, that type of growth. And so we base it on more than just the two metrics, we look at everything. And, and then you got to look at other things, like you have, the university's probably not going anywhere anytime soon. You have a large employer that is not going anywhere anytime soon. And so then you look... ... is different than in an Oshkosh or in a Fond du Lac. And that gives, you know, people can have bigger piece of property or a larger style home, as opposed to being in those other communities. And so setbacks are different, and there's all different zoning and those regulations that would attract more people to a community like Ripon as opposed to some of those other ones. So with that, and that's why we're looking at just a 2% increase over the next 15 years, nothing too, too crazy, right? And that's something to strive for. That's, that's a really good goal for the community, is, is a 2% increase instead of a 20% decrease.
Yeah, which is why I ask for it's captured, because I love what you just shared, and I want to make sure that that is captured for the record.
Sure.
And what's included. I must be, I don't, I don't know, I don't necessarily see where that is, but maybe there's more from this report.
And that's just, this is just my presentation.
Got it.
So there is a report that...
Yeah, it was shared via email, it's in your packet.
Yeah.
So there's a whole...
So we're going to go through that later too, or this is just a high-level?
This is just a high-level summary.
I'm just doing a high-level summary.
Yeah. We don't want to be here for...
And I can talk, so just don't, don't get me going on this.
Let me clarify, I did see that, but it's, it's helpful. Thank you for bringing it up.
So I'm just trying to hit the high points and really addressing where the issues arise in just the background data aspect, you know? So most studies that we do, the data is the data, and you run with it, and you go with it. And this is not the only housing study we've done in the last three years that we've run into the issue of, well, there's a decline in population in some very strong communities. That doesn't make any sense to us, you know? So why are they thinking that way? And in this case specifically, it was, it was Ripon, Reedsburg, Green Lake, what was the other community? And, and we flat out had to call with the Department of Administration, their, their state demographer, and said, how'd you come up with this? Because this does not make any sense, based on what we know. And they basically said, that's how we do it. So that's how it is.
And Mark and I talked a lot about this, and we wanted to present a couple, you know, differing, like, you know, what it was projected to be when we last did the housing study, what it could be if we make decisions to grow, and we do have opportunities to grow, and what it looks like if, if we decline. And so there are choices to be made as a community, what direction you go, based on opportunities and smart growth and planning out these things, and the impact of that long-term. Any of these scenarios, right, spell different stories for our community long-term, right? A 20% decline in population, when I first saw the numbers, I, okay, that is, that is, that is not something, that's something we have to look at and say, okay, that, that could happen, right? And what is the ramifications of that? That, that, that means no growth, you know, higher property taxes, higher utility rates per person, right? You're, you're looking at some pretty drastic cuts in service over a period of time. So looking at that and saying, okay, what else, what other options are there for us? And just kind of taking note of, we have choices, and, and there are ramifications for that. But the idea of not growing is, is that green line. And that is a, a very difficult situation for our community over the next couple decades if we go that route. Those are very challenging demographic trends. So it's, it's important to just recognize it and, and see why it is important to, to review the rest of this and say, where can we, where can we take that and go a different direction?
Hi. I think our problem, not that I'm an expert, is in our highway systems that we have around here, we don't have a 41 near us, I mean, near, near us, or a 151 like Wapon does. So it's hard to pull the large companies in here. I mean, we have our one large company, and the rest of them are homegrown companies, basically. And I think that's a problem with housing, because the bigger, the businesses you have, the more apt you're to have people building in the area. And right now, most of our population is semi-retired, retired, I'd say. So we're more of a bedroom community. If it wasn't for Alliance, you know, pulling people in here, our demographics would probably be different. And the only thing I can see is, is until people start utilizing, '23 or '23 starts picking up or something like that as a major thoroughfare, we're going to just be staying it. I don't know if that's how you feel when you look at the stuff or what.
So that, that's a great point. So when looking at that aspect, the, the trends now, especially with, there's generational things. So the, the World War II generation is, you know, is getting really small and, and they're fading away. But the baby boomers aren't a generation that's retired, and they're also, you know, slowly moving out. These trends are up and down as they are. But the generation after us is a large generation, similar to the baby boomers, right? And what we've learned from that generation specifically, because they're the ones that are, they're, they're, they're making their way up the ladder in the workforce, and their mindset has changed from the previous two generations, is that they live where they want to live. They don't live... And, and that is not, that's their trend right now. So one of the things you want to look at is broadband access, that if, if you have good, solid broadband, you're going to draw individuals and families to live here, as opposed to that's where the company is. And so people are one of two things. A, they're willing to drive to go to their office or their place of work, and B, if they have the ability to work from home, it doesn't matter where, where the actual office or the job is, because they're at their home and they're living where they want to, they're working where they want to live, living where they want to work. And so they're looking for those other amenities, and that first amenity is broadband. So if you've got strong broadband, you know, that's the first and foremost thing. And then the other thing is, is access to entertainment of some sort, that, that they're going to appreciate and look at, whether it's the arts, whether that's sports, whether it's something else, that that's what's going to attract them, you know, some sort of nightlife and, and whatnot. But that's, that's the trend now, and that, those are the, that's the generation you want to capitalize on, is, is still in their existing house. You can never make someone live somewhere else, but if we can make it affordable or attractive for somebody to move out of their house, housing, every step in the ladder, there's a transition. So, you know, you transition from a first-time home buyer to a second-level housing, and then even beyond that is executive, they call it executive-style housing. But what happens is people will stay 30 years in their one location, and the value of that property is, or to the person living there is, they probably don't have a mortgage anymore, and... Or the transition out to a place that has no stairs, and it's, it's maybe wider doorways or, or what have you, but a one-story property, maybe it's, it's tied in near... Transition to the next level for the seniors, and then it opens up a property for first-time home buyers to buy. Because those houses are going to fall in that under 300,000 range generally, whereas a brand-new house, you're looking at 350 or above. And the ability to buy at that brand-new level for first-time home buyers is very difficult. And so you have to have the new houses, but you also have to have that transition of housing from living at mom and dad's house or living in an apartment to that first-time house. And so, and that's part of this, is, is how do you encourage that? And that's possibly partnering with, with the industries, with the hospitals, with the nursing homes to create the different living opportunities for everybody at every level.
Have you seen some creative ways that communities are partnering with hospitals, industries?
I mean, Reedsburg, and I probably said it two years ago, is, Reedsburg's one of the best examples of that, is they have, in essence, they, they pass ordinances, allow for, you know, the no-steps, and then the shared lot lines. So you can have, it's single-family ownership, but you share a wall. It's a duplex to most people, but most duplexes is either rented on both sides or one owner on one side and a renter on the other. But what they changed their zoning to allow to where you can have the common wall, but it's owned independently on both sides. And so that allows for a different level of housing. And then they've also gone through a series of having all these senior living opportunities of every level, from independent to assisted to nursing to memory, so the, all the different stages of it, so that people can still stay in some sort of community, but not have to maintain their house or, or live in a place that, you know, I, I'm the youngest of seven kids, so the house had, you know, however many bedrooms and a couple stories, and, you know, once I left, because I was the youngest, you know, that's too big of a house for mom and dad. They need to move into something smaller. And in that case, they did, but a lot of people hold on to that, that house for a long time, and that's where we want to encourage them. So you do have to have that mix. You have to have new, and, and you have to have rental and the various rentals. And so when we look at our previous study results, we were only looking at adding over the next eight years, because we really did it in '22, with 64 housing units, and that was split between rental and own units. And, and since that time, we've really increased. So yeah, that's fine. So now moving into the new projections, and this is, this is where things get interesting too, is this is the financial data that we've pulled based on the area median income and affordability index. And so affordability is 2.5 times your income, broken down into 12 months to figure out what you can afford, as well as the median single-family home value. And that number right there is, is an adjusted number based on, if you just looked on the, the Census's American Community Survey for median single-family home value based on 2023 information, it's $161,000. Well, if anybody watches the housing market, they really know that you, there's no houses for sale for $161,000, right? So that can't really be a median. So we, Adam and I talked about this, but we pull MLS data, we pull sales data, and we combine that all together to figure out what is truly a little bit closer to a median single-family value from those being sold in the 300, 400,000 range to those being sold in the 100, 150 range, and that's where this number comes from. And what you'll see is, the four columns in the middle is defined as workforce housing. So you have 100% AMI, and to the right of it's 120. So from 120% of the area median income down to the 60, that's your workforce housing range. And that's, that's the people you really focus on. And with that, you'll notice on the top part of the chart, the middle part of the chart, is the owner-occupied affordability. And even with a single-family home value of 200,000 and change, those workforce housing eligible people cannot afford the housing. Okay? So that's where the affordability gap is. And you'll even say at 120% of AMI, that family or individual is short $23,495. So what that says is, does the community need to have some sort of down payment assistance program? Are there ways that you can work with the lenders in the area, with the realtors in the area, to find ways to lower that affordability gap, so that when people are buying houses, they can get into the house they want, but also the house they can afford? So, and part of that is, you just land sales and whatnot. So that is, that's, that's a staggering stat right there, is just look at the unaffordability of the, the house value right now. And then you look at the bottom, and that's the renter side of things. And what you'll notice there, that workforce housing can afford the rent. And so that's where, if we look at our trends, as you drive around the state, just in general, you'll see multifamily residents, apartment buildings popping up everywhere, right? Because one of two things. One, they're affordable for the individual or family, and two, it's profitable for the developer, right? And then it ends up being that there's also, depending on the level, there's, there's tax credits at various levels for them. And so it ends up working out that the renting of property and rental units are an affordable aspect. Then you'll see here that the 60% is at that level. So, so that's something to be considerate in, in this study, is that the affordability of housing is, is not affordable right now for people. So then we did, based on the new data and all of our choices and decisions we made and running the numbers, we... Five years, by 2030, there should be, the, the goal should be 50 housing units. And with that, that, that's already taken into account all the data that Adam's provided to me, so things are already in place, even though some may not have been built. It's, it's from the data he's provided. So in the next five years, we're looking at 50 housing units, and over 15 years, 200. And that's broken down into, of the 200, only 70 single-family housing, but 130 multifamily or rental-style housing. And so that's the trend, is to make it a higher percentage of the rentals as a part of the new construction of, of housing, and to draw people into the community. So then our goals, the next five years, that's a split, 20 single-family, 30 multifamily units, and then beyond that, over the 15 years, 70 single-family, and then 130 multifamily units. And, and the trend's starting as, as they're starting to build. There's a little combination of building new housing units or revitalizing other properties to make them attractive for, for renting opportunities. But like I said, when developers come into communities and they have these housing studies, they look at that, what's affordable, what's not affordable, what's, what's the fair market rent in the area, and if they can build to that level. And if they can't, there's always a gap. And then what is that gap funding? So, you know, maybe you're not necessarily doing a down payment assistance to an individual or a family, but you're providing assistance to a developer to get them to do a project in this area. And whether it's four units or 16 units or, or more, that, those are the desirable level of units for people to live in, so. So recommendation on availability is encouraging more residential infill. It's easy to expand outward in a lot of communities if you have the land, the availability. But what we're looking at is, if there's a way to entice people, like if people have double lots, is there a way to entice them to sell off the one lot or to develop that lot so somebody can live there? And then it's, it's the ability of maybe first right of refusal, or, and we'll talk more about that too with other property, but maybe the city can buy those lots and develop themselves, or, or somehow... In some fashion that somebody can develop it. But you really want to maintain that infill. But you really want to maintain that infill and have a good, solid community so you don't have all these vacant lots here and there and without. You know, sometimes it's nice to have a little bit of green space, but it'd be nice to fill some of those areas in with housing opportunities.
Mark, do you recall how many single-family lots are currently for sale in Ripon approximately?
It was, when I last looked at it, it was in the 30 range, and that fluctuates, you know, up and down. But I show that there's 105 vacant lots, residentially zoned within the city. So only 30 of them, if it's the same 30, you know, because there might be some differences with how I pick my data and the selling of them, so only 1/3 of those lots are even for sale. So how do we get 50% up for sale so that people can develop? Because when you look at infill development, it's generally cheaper for somebody to buy and build on an infill development lot because you already have utilities right there, right? So from that aspect, you just have a hookup charge and you're good to go. You don't have to run any extra utilities. And from a city standpoint, you don't have to have any infrastructure improvements, whereas if you bought 40 acres on the outskirts of town and you wanted to connect in, there's all that extra infrastructure cost to that, so. But the next step, yes, sir?
I just wanted to step back just a little bit. When you talk about housing demand, like 50 housing units in five years, that's not necessarily 50 new units, but it's 50 units that are needed, right? Because if you build like a house or a couple houses, that means that people might move out of houses that are already in the city. So you're kind of opening up like those areas and like letting people move around? Or is that purely more housing units than what we currently have?
It's more housing units than you currently have.
Okay.
But what you stated is what you want to encourage. You want to encourage people to make those, in essence, vacate their house or vacate their apartment so that someone can come in behind them as they relocate.
And you get like a ripple effect where.
And you get the ripple effect, exactly.
And I'll just note that right now, with the new housing that's going up, there is no ripple effect. We have a lot of people coming in from other communities, buying their, buying houses and not people moving up in the market just because of low interest rates or just they're comfortable or whatever, but.
Yep.
I think we see that a lot because we have such low availability that anytime something is available, the people that really want it are coming in and buying it, you know, above market or in a bidding war or whatever, so that you don't have that flexibility to let your citizens move.
Right. So then, the second recommendation that we have is we. And for the school-owned property to the north of the city. So one of the things there is, you know, purchase that property, subdivide it into not only single-family but multifamily, senior housing, parkland, you know, some sort of development to attract people into there. And then go through the process of liquidating that and getting some houses built. And right there's the concept plan that was discussed and decided upon. It gives flexibility to the community, because right now, like we said, if there's 30 lots for sale, I don't know how many are owned by the city and for sale, there's zero. So whether this whole 40 acres is purchased by the city and somehow transferred onto a developer, or if the city maintains ownership and works with multiple developers to make this happen, there's a lot of different ways to do it. But sometimes developers will not come to a community unless you have property for them. They don't want to have the outlay of acquiring the property outright or finding that property. They want to come in and look at it and say, hey, you know, Adam's just saying, hey, I got 40 acres and we want to develop 20 lots or 26 lots or whatever. And then, okay, let's talk about it, let's look at it. But if you just said, yeah, we need housing, but we have no land or properties for you, they're just going to keep walking through. So you have to have every, and it's really about building that toolbox, right? You know, you have screwdrivers, you have wrenches, you know, you have pliers, you have hammers, whatnot. And that's really what you want to do here, is you want to have a housing toolbox and all different options for people and developers and whatnot to come. And we focused on how you want to develop, so, various tools. So, recommendation three is creating awareness, making it a priority for the city. Doing this housing study is one of those things. We just mentioned that. And in relationships with landowners and developers. So, you know, the school is a great, you know, a partner in this, right? The school, what's their plan with the property? Well, the school district wants houses because they want students, they want families. And that's very important to them. So you have a partnership with the school to make something like that happen. You make partnerships with developers for projects, and you also do, maybe you have certain properties other than the school one, that maybe you do first right of refusal options to purchase, things like that, that you're at the forefront of it. You're not going to own it today, but if somebody comes to you and says they're interested in it, maybe you're the one who can, you get the first shot at it with that property owner. And the other option is reuse. Or Roosevelt School property is a prime example, is that would be a great reuse into some sort of mixed-use development that includes housing and whatever else you can think of. And going back to Reedsburg, they took South School and they put a TIF district around it and they made it a mixed-use development. And they have, they left the gym in there, and so it's a community center and people can, you know, use the gym and rent the gym out, but it's also housing. It's first floor, second floor housing. Affordable housing and low income and whatnot, but it's one of those things where you take a school and you reuse and you redevelop it into something, some sort of housing that you have, so. And in some of those cases, you have, you know, you could call it a gem, you know, it just needs polishing. And sometimes landowners don't know how to polish that gem, and that's where the city comes in. And what can you bring to the table for that, to entice that landowner, whether it's to sell or whether it's to revitalize the property, you have to have that tool to make it work, And then affordability measures, so encourage that development of workforce housing. The more houses someone can build at a time, the cheaper, not cheaper, but the less expensive they have. If they're building one house, you know, maybe it's 400,000, but if they're building a series of 10 houses, maybe they're 350,000, something like that. I'm just throwing numbers out, but the economy of scale with that, instead of just building high-end houses. Encourage the apartment complexes, encourage developers to come here and interact with them. And all this stuff is spelled out in detail in the report. But senior-to-workforce housing transition, that's really a big one. And then ownership rental status, to make sure that you have the diverse mix of housing options, so that it's just not a one-stop, you know, one-size-fits-all. And then we have infrastructure recommendations as far as incentives or regulations, annexations, land purchases, all the different methods used to make modifications to the community so that development does happen within the community, so.
I wanted to point out, there's something that I've kind of been looking at for the past couple of years, and you have it as a recommendation in the full study, which is part of the alternative infrastructure design, which talks about moving a street right-of-way from 66 feet to 60 feet.
Yep.
Which is, I'm assuming this 12% cost savings is just in the initial construction of the street. But something that I've thought about is, every time you have less pavement to upkeep and plow and salt and maintain, year over year, there are savings to be had there, too, which I just wanted to point out to everyone, is important if we start thinking about that we might have a declining population, if we have less infrastructure to maintain, that is less tax burden immediately, right off the bat. That is a more fiscally responsible way to design and implement streets. And it's just something I think we should all keep in mind as we look at any infrastructure that we're working on, is, okay, how much do we actually need? Do we need to build a highway through, or is it a residential road that can be two lanes, you know, and go one side parking, one side not? Because every little bit of that starts to help.
Yep, exactly. And I'm glad you point that out. And that's even the concept plan we came up with with the school property, they're smaller lots, it's a smaller right-of-way system. It's not, there's sidewalk in part of it, but it's really more of a trail than having sidewalks, so same thing, it's an infrastructure saving. But it's, yeah, the 12% is the upfront cost of just installation of that. But you're right, there's a long-term impact of it because you're plowing less snow, you're maintaining less surface area and whatnot. And it's more cost-effective to do that way, both short-term and long-term.
So I did have a follow-up to that technical question on the right-of-way size. I noticed that in that smaller right-of-way, you had five-foot sidewalks with a one-foot strip on the property owner's side of the sidewalk. Is there any reason why we wouldn't have four-foot sidewalks and wouldn't need that one? Right-of-way, just to tighten things up even more?
So I believe ADA requirements now is a five-foot sidewalk? So, an engineer could prove me wrong, but I think they went to the five-foot sidewalk.
Thank you.
I have a whole concept here. We've talked about this. I did have a meeting with the school district about just sharing this with them before it went public. This is just a concept. A few months back, Veerbecker completed a report on this property and it, you know, just to make sure that if it were pursued, that it would work, right? And that the concept, we weren't getting into something that had, you know, drainage problems or environmental concerns. But the idea of lean infrastructure and that was implemented here, smaller lot sizes. So this is a component of the study that we wanted to show, you know, this could happen on that side of town on a property that, you know, could theoretically be available. There are other strategies that were. The Wildflower Development on Scott Street, trying to get new housing built. We have the SCS project coming up for review next week, creating 64 units on a city-owned property. And we've had some success in attracting development with only 30-some lots left, limited resources. You know, looking toward other opportunities is what we've started doing. We have a lot of interest in Ripon. There are a lot of developers that weren't here at the time of the first study, okay? We engaged a lot of builders a couple of weeks ago at a forum with Invisigraire Fondleac put on on housing for the county. So there's steps in here. We have contacted and reached out to other property owners and. To, if your property, is it available or is there an infill that we could work with? So we're doing that, right, in anticipation that there's demand here, right? And how do we do this smartly? Where do we identify it? And that stuff we will continue to discuss. There certainly is a continued need for housing. It is something that I deal with on a daily basis. Every day, there is a conversation that I have. You know, it's every day. And obviously affordability remains a large concern, particularly in the single-family home realm. You know, we have worked with a recent developer to put it in new housing listed at $250,000. That is, again, another program and another kind of test in the market to see. But I will say that I don't know if there's another community that is going to be having $250,000 brand-new houses for sale anytime soon, right? So we need to look at that as an option as well, because that affordability. There's a lot in this to digest, but there will continue to be opportunities, and we will bring them forward and continue to work with Veerbecker on some things. I think there's some zoning code reforms that maybe we. Elevate some opportunities for infill development, because make things streamlined or easier, because that's another thing, time is money for a lot of developers. And if you put them through a process where they have to get. They're going to go build somewhere else. In addition to this, to Steve's point about, you know, not being close to interstate or a system of that nature, right? What we see is there's an incredible demand still in. Fondleac just came out with a study, it's referenced in there, they say they need 1,500 units in the next five years, okay? You know, there's no doubt there's an opportunity for Ripon to offer a quality of life and offer a different product, some very core things that we do here, including being a safe community, right? Having thriving downtown, having business opportunities here, having a school district that's thriving, right? Those things matter. And. Because as long as we focus on those things as well, I believe people will still want to come here and live here, and we will be a very attractive option for people moving out of those larger areas that have direct access to the interstate. So I think, and if you have any questions about it, certainly reach out to me or Mark or whatever, but.
Are you looking for us to say we feel positive about the ideas sort of presented? Potential action on these, or, you know, you mentioned some potential changes to ordinances or even looking at, obviously, this property. Just is this now to kind of stay tuned and you're looking for kind of the feedback of the council, how we feel?
Yeah, I think we have opportunities and they will come forward. You know, how aggressive does the council want to be with some of these issues? Those are things we can talk about over the next, I would say, few months. Obviously, a lot of these things take time. A project of this magnitude is a significant, you know, undertaking. I will say that, you know, when you look at why the city would undertake a development thing that is really spurring housing development in Wisconsin across communities, right? It's the main, it's the main thing. And in a situation like this, let's just say there's 35 lots there. Say $3 million to buy the property and put in utilities, say that's the number. We've looked at what this project could cost. The city would have to bid it out and all that and design it out, and it could be phased. But say that's that 35 lots for $3, $3.5 million. Well, that's $100,000 per lot without profit. So you're looking at $120,000 for the lot without a house on it. And in rural communities, that is not happening. In the Milwaukee, Kenosha, Dane Counties, Racine Counties, yes. They're selling $100,000 lots with $400,000 homes because the incomes can support it. Incomes, as you can see, just don't necessarily support it. So that then comes to, well, what does the developer do? They come and they ask for some incentive through a TIF district or some sort of land, right, for free to try to, and at what point does the city say, well, through TIF, through not profiting off the land but trying to sell it, by working with builders and doing it a different way? Because this is a rural model of developing it as a city. There are certainly. That idea, but you do avoid some of the challenges that we've seen in the community, maybe by doing it this way, where you have developments that don't build out because they have restrictive covenants or they have certain rules, right? So there's a lot to think about with this, but I know that the school district, we've talked to them, they're aware of this, so it's not a big surprise. And we'll just continue to discuss it with them to see if there is a way we can do something. In some areas in town where there are a high number of vacant lots, the topography or the, just the, you can't put a 400, you can't put nothing but a $450,000 house on it because you got to build it a certain way, right? That's not affordable. So how do we get a larger number of affordable houses without creating more opportunities or more lots? So, that's a lot, but I'm sorry. That's kind of what we're talking about.
My main point is, the housing situation sounds great. I understand that there's slow growth in this area, but what I'm talking about basically is. You know, so that there's more job growth, that people will attract more people, and right now, we're really stagnant at that. And being stagnant at having a bigger industry here or more businesses is going to hurt our housing in the long term. So that's where I was going with that highway 23 situation. We're on the end of Fond du Lac County, and they kind of, Fond du Lac kind of gives us the old, oh, who cares, deal most of the time. Buy at least another big business move here, because we lost a few of them in time, like the Cookie Company and all these other ones. It'd be nice to gain one anyway, so maybe we ought to promote more for... Situation that comes into the city.
I get it, Steve, but what comes first, the housing or the jobs, right? The economic development side, the private sector is not necessarily going to invest in a community that doesn't have housing for their employees, right?
Well, it goes hand-in-hand, I tell you.
Currently, our largest employer is begging us for more housing because they have, I believe, 50% of their workforce coming in from out of town.
Yeah, we heard it on the tour, at Alliance you're talking, right?
Yeah, and several other large employers in town are in the same boat where they, their employees can't, they can find employees to come here, but they can't find a place for them to live. So, I feel that we need the housing first, and once we get past the tipping point on housing to support the jobs that are available, then we start seeking, continually seeking new business, but then we can really start pushing for bigger business to come, have more housing available. We need both.
Yeah, I guess what's interesting is you look like, this is not an either-or, right? I mean, we need housing and we need industry.
You got it. It's not like, if you don't have both, it's not going to promote growth in the city. And that's where I was, that's what I was talking about. You're right.
Any further questions or discussion on this topic? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I encourage everyone, if they haven't done so already, to read, I believe it's a 41-page report, but it's very informative and...
Very readable. Thank you.
All right, moving on to pay application for approval.
I would like to make it for approval, giving out a $1,230,024,14.
I'll second, but I'd like to hear an update from Alan on how the building is going.
So we have the motion from Doug, second from Mark. Alan, could you give us an update on the building progress?
Last week Tuesday, I believe it was, the last precast panel was set, so in advance of the planned schedule. Next steps at this point are, there will be setting the structural steel and the roof structure, and then applying the roofing insulation and membrane. Probably going to delay work at this point in time with the cold that we're having, but in absence of cold weather, they had hoped maybe that would all be done by the end of this month. With that structural work also included, starting on the, enclosing the office area. That's what I have right now.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a note that even if we do get a little bit of delays, to hear a construction project is even two days ahead is quite good to hear.
It's a new thing.
Hearing none. All is in favor of approving pay application number two in the amount of $1,230,024,14. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Next is the DPW facility furnishings proposal.
So, in your packet, and I'm sorry, some of the copies went weird, strange, so if you want me to pull up the actual deck of furnishings, I can. So as part of the DPW building...
Why don't you, so we can see it in color?
Yeah, I can...
Thanks.
It was, do, 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 or do I have it? No, it needs to load. So part of the design contract with SEH is the interior design, so everything from, we've had to make. And then, in addition to that, pulling together a furnishings proposal, so they work with Atmosphere Interior, Atmosphere Commercial Interiors to do all of this work in... We looked at furnishing for office spaces, common areas, conference rooms, et cetera, et cetera. All prices were obtained through the state of Wisconsin VendorNet, or it's called a competitive state bid, right? So the state of Wisconsin issues every couple of years a bid package, and they get, you know, pricing competitively for equipment from furnishings all the way down to oil, right? So we used state pricing to get these numbers, and then we did also pause and understand that there is a local vendor and engage that local vendor, and they declined to submit pricing. So the overall package is $128,895. We have worked with the design company to narrow the selections down and put together, you know, a package that, from a design perspective, works with all of the other features and is consistent across the building. While we have some nice pieces in our existing facilities, I would not recommend bringing some of them over in the new building. But certainly, we tried to make sure that we were not just spending frivolously on higher qual, you know, higher expensive pieces, right? And we backed this down from $152,000 originally to now $128,000. Basically, you can see, this is the entire kind of furnished area of the building, and you then get into each individual, you know, area with what is going on there with the specific color. So, you know, every, everybody's chair will be the same chair. Everybody's desk will have a stand-up desk and a similarly designed, you know, panel and support area. There will be, you know, cords and...
Yeah.
All of this stuff. So, this is what it will essentially look like in each office space. And we've tried to make selections that are, you know, not, like I said, the Cadillac, but more in line with what the budget is for it. We anticipated about $150,000 in furnishings, fixtures, and kind of just extra things. So this is under that, and generally speaking, pretty consistent, and, let me just... Where we, you know, the break room have chairs and the similar tables to the senior center, and the conference room will have a table in the middle with some electronics, you know, so it's a smart room, right? So that's it. I'm happy to, Alan's been through this deck more times than I have, just checking and double-checking, and we're just seeking approval of it. You know, in the end of the month, pricing will go up, or there's a potential price adjustment with the state bid, so.
Oh, thank you, Veer. I have a question on this commercial office space furniture. What is the expected life expectancy for this kind of furniture as opposed to like just stuff you buy at Home Depot or whatever for your office furniture you buy for home?
Yeah, so I mean, so with this, I asked for the warranty information, and obviously, there's a little bit more robust warranty information with commercial equipment and commercial grade, there's obviously a higher price. There's like limited lifetime warranties and, you know, up to 12-year warranty on certain aspects of these pieces. You know, the difference really is, you know, the chairs you are sitting on are only sat on pretty much twice a month, and they probably were ordered off of Amazon for $125, and, you know, that's fine for this. These are workspaces that our employees are in, and we anticipate these pieces of equipment lasting for 10, 20 years, right? These, you know, storage containers and these desk and work areas, we're not, you know, changing these out every, you look at City Hall, I don't know how long it's been that, but it's been that for a long time. So I would anticipate this being a 15, 20-year, right, type purchase. And in that regard, right, the other... Buy a $125 chair, and then when it breaks in two years, we buy another $125 chair, and we do that four times, and we could have just bought a $400 chair that lasted the time that...
$400 chair would last 15, 20 years.
Could last that long, right?
I will say from personal experience with the company Steelcase, which they're using for pretty much all the desk, workspace furniture, I've easily seen those pieces in that configuration last 40 to 50 years without issue.
When it comes to conference chairs, and, you know, I think it's just good to have the general, you know, again, what you present it, but when you're looking at that office right there, if you even want to just stay on it, your point of you could, you know, spend $250 from something from a store and then later, I feel like for office chairs for individuals, they are really unique. You know, I'm someone who's shorter, I have to be honest, and so sometimes when I, places I've asked to bring in my own chair, just so I could have an adjustable, different, is there a model for the office workspaces where you can say to an individual, we will reimburse you up to $250, for example, or whatever, whatever the cost of what we're going to pay for a chair? But again, not to be that way for the general chairs throughout the whole building, you know, get what you need to get and make it uniform. But for the staff, could that be a model?
It could be. I just, at some point, it's just you buy the chair, and they have options on them from a, you know, flexibility perspective, they tilt, they turn, they swivel, they, you know, and you can obviously get comfortable. And if somebody wants to bring in their own chair, they certainly can do that. We wouldn't encourage it from a, you know, but I don't...
But I guess maybe the question is for current staff, if they know that they're going to be at a certain office, and we're going to spend it anyways. I mean, my guess is a, maybe, I don't know if the contract was priced out for exactly that number of chairs, and it would change, but let's say it was five less chairs. I guess it's an opportunity to advocate for staff, if they wanted that flexibility, it could be at least asked. I'm just saying that...
We would have to literally have people on some level come, like, what chairs do you want, right? Here's a, here's a, here's a deck of chairs, right? Bring them in, sit down. Which one do you want, right?
Actually, my point was, you say to somebody, go out, find a chair at an office store, we'll reimburse you up to this amount. If you don't want to do that, we will provide it.
I think the model that this would lean towards is, here's a chair, if it doesn't suit your needs, you may bring your own, and when you're no longer working for us, you can take your chair home. This way, all the chairs are uniform for, unless there's someone that has special needs for the chair, and when that person leaves and are replaced, there is a chair in place for their replacement.
I get it. I'm just saying, it could be a neat opportunity for current staff, if they wanted to buy their own chair. My guess is if they're listening in, they were like, yeah, I would like that opportunity. Maybe they don't. And if they don't want it, then again, we just go in here and buy what matches.
But again, too, like... Your $400 chair that lasted two years, right? We're buying this all uniform because it has the same warranty, it has the same quality, it has the same standard. That's really the advantage here in doing it that way, versus piecing it together and risking that in two years, somebody's...
Mark and Doug.
Yeah, I understand the, looking at it from an ergonomic, a flexibility, you know, having personal preference. That being said, I've dealt with similar chairs to these. I don't think they have the Steelcase brand chair specifically, but they are highly customizable, highly adjustable, and I would be quite surprised if they were not suitable for someone, especially with the, pairing it with an adjustable height desk, which they've gone for the option of, which I would like to point out is a very good thing. I use one at my workplace, and it's helped some of my back issues and neck issues, especially with being on a computer all day as I am. So I think, it seems like it could be a good idea if someone needed a different thing, and that that would be handled at a case-by-case, but this is something that I think will work really, really strongly for, you know, 99% of our employees. And if there are other circumstances, you know, they can, we can work around it, they can make a request, and they can change it. But I'm assuming right now, what they have is not going to be nearly as nice, or is not nearly as nice, as what is presented right now. So anything that we bring in will be a nice improvement in their day-to-day.
Doug?
Yeah, so, Adam, if there was an employee that had a verifiable medical reason to have a, and that chair didn't work for them, it caused some hardship, we could accommodate them.
Absolutely.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the DPW facility furnishing proposal.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by John, second by Doug. More discussion?
Just real quick, on this picture, you know, I see the adjustable height, and I see the desk. I guess that's just a panel. Is it, is it, have the adjustable height? I mean, it looks different, but probably just because the panels are at it. That what it's...
Yeah, every, every desk, every office area has this desk in it.
Okay.
Has the adjustable, if you just go through, there it is again. There it is again. So each, it's just one of these, it's like, you know, these two here are the adjustable.
The ones that your cursor is on right there, the ones that, to the top and the bottom of those are not adjustable, it's just the middle ones that are adjustable. Those are the ones that the monitors will be, monitors and the keyboards will be used on.
So it's not all, not every thing, it's just one, just a small one?
No, but right, even when you scroll down to that other, when you scroll down where you just were...
Like, in this case, it's right here.
Yeah. But to the white one, where you just were, no, like down, so that was different, but again, it's just might be those panels and not showing it on that.
Yeah, this is just the idea of the panels, showing it because they just, that's the picture they have?
But do you see what it's saying, like on the side? So you, you're saying that for sure where that chair is, that's an adjustable height?
Yes, they will all be adjustable height.
Okay.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor of approving the DPW facility furnishing proposal. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. All right, moving on to parks use agreements. The Parks and Rec Committee reviewed and recommended approval of the attached Parks and Use Agreements for baseball and softball field use. Agreements have been drafted for Ripon Youth Baseball and Softball Clubs, as well as the Ripon Diamond Booster Club, and some or all of those agreements are in your packet.
You had the Diamond Booster, and then we added the youth baseball, softball. They're identical, so it just, yeah, they're identical. But for the, yeah.
Are these substantially different from the original agreement that had expired?
There are changes. So, as I note in the staff report, some new requirements regarding adherence to guidelines. So one of the main things we added was... So one of the main things we added was, we have intentions this year to improve some of the ball diamonds and put together a maintenance plan with the contractor and get kind of a more aggressive, you know, this is how you maintain, or this is, these are what's recommended annually to be done. So adding that into the agreement, reporting requirements. So having there be an annual summary of what they're spending and maintenance reports so we can determine and see what's, what's happening. And then inspection protocol, so I know that those are the main changes. And those are generally a reaction to some of the challenges we've encountered with the existing agreements and being free of... ...we're trying to better understand and set a standard that there's some consistency so there doesn't become finger-pointing about who's doing a better job or who's not, as well as seeing what value truly is being brought from reservations and things of that nature that we are not charging are, you know, significant. So free use is significant.
One of the, one of the packets just needs the title changed.
Okay.
It's identical for both of them, but the body of them is different.
Oh, okay. I got it.
Join.
As someone that's on the Parks and Rec Committee too, I saw, I mean, you know, really going through this, I really liked too that there's the annual report that is, that is now required. And so, you know, one could see this as, you know, the city is putting in a lot of sort of guidelines, things like that. What I like about this, the report, is that that is also a tangible way where the users of the fields can really say what they feel the needs are, what improvements, you know, they've done or what they see. So I think it's, it's just a really nice way to be on the same page from all and have it in writing and I think probably they would find that really valuable for them.
Have we gotten a motion on this? I don't believe we have. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve both as presented.
I'll second.
Further discussion? And just for clarity, the Ripon Youth Baseball and Softball Clubs is one club or is it two clubs?
Uh, it's one club.
One club, all right. So just the two agreements?
Correct.
Wait, so, can you read it?
I'll make a motion to approve the Ripon Youth Baseball and Softball Club as one and the Ripon Diamond Booster Club as the other. So those two.
I wonder why we don't just make a motion to approve this for anyone that's using the softball fields, sort of any group, so that it's not specific to just these specific naming groups?
Because these two groups are essentially community partners in this location.
I mean, if another group...
Whereas we do on occasion rent out the fields to groups having tournaments and that would fall under their own agreement.
Okay.
We have an agreement with the American Legion that is similar to this one, it's just on a different term, right? So this is sort of the standard new agreement. This was the first agreement we ever entered with anybody for field use, right? This, the expiring agreement. The new agreement is just, we then used that to get American, I believe, a year after this one, so they're coming due again. So we'll bring forward that one as well. So it is the standard agreement. You know, there's three people, three groups that have this agreement with the city, basically, so.
And those groups make up the majority?
...with would be the Ripon Area School District that has use of these facilities exclusively or regularly.
An exciting point was if there was another group like this, why, why come back and have us review this again? Just, we just say, use the same format?
We would. We would just use this template and bring them forward and, you know, there just isn't another, there aren't other groups that are, you know, these are the four main.
There's no more days for the groups to use them, I think.
Buster. They can play now.
Any further discussion on the parks use agreements? Hearing none. All is in favor of approving the parks use agreement for the Ripon Youth Baseball and Softball Clubs and the Ripon Diamond Boosters Club. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Thank you. All right, moving on to the community fireworks discussion. As you saw in your packet, I believe it was early last week, the city received a message from Wolverine Fireworks Display, our current fireworks provider, that they will no longer be able to perform work for our fireworks display on July 11th and their crew. So we're bringing this to the council for discussion as to where the city wants to move forward with fireworks. As you see, there is one company that has some availability, possibly on July 3rd or 5th. Several companies are not available or refused or just haven't gotten back to the city with availability. Mark?
What other communities around us are doing or what dates they're doing their shows, I think it's a disappointment kind of that we had our schedule and we had a... ...with, and unfortunately, it sounds like we're probably gonna have to reschedule, find a new date, just to be able to have a show if we choose to do that. But I was asking, just so that, oftentimes I feel like, you know, we have a lot of communities around us, Green Lake, Berlin, and I think there's, there's draw if we pick a different night that isn't on the same night as those communities, or at least see what the scheduling would look like. I think it's valuable... ...to consideration, just so that we can kind of work with those communities around us and draw on some of those members and, and just make sure that we're not conflicting schedules unduly or without at least considering it. Clearly, I would prefer if there was a conflict and that was what worked best for us and we have money set aside, then maybe, you know, we would choose to do that anyways. But that was just kind of my first initial thought, was to take that into consideration.
Doug?
So I do remember a couple of years ago, Ripon Fest wanting us to move our fireworks and going with them. Now we're raising having fireworks, I hate to say this, down at Barlow Park, which is, I think, where they wanted them. It's just a thought, can we maybe talk with them? I think most people would prefer them at Murray Park, but...
Fest may in 10 years die out and lock in like the 3rd of July. Have it that night. Everybody has, or not everybody, but most people have the 4th off. So you could take your family on the 3rd that night, your kids could stay up late, whatever, watch the fireworks, you still have the 4th off. And then you don't have to rush, you can go to 4th of July parties or whatever. I think we should consider locking in that company like on July 3rd this year and then maybe locking it in always on the 3rd down the road. Just my opinion.
Oh, I don't know, how long do you design a contract for, is it a one-year contract?
Generally speaking, it's, it's year by year, but, you know, the contractors like to get into a schedule, you know, and they have crews and they have predictability. So, you know, we've engaged six companies. There have been two that have been responsive and said, likely the 3rd is an option. There is a chance that a company could do the 4th. There is still a chance that one of those could maybe make that work, which if we can lock that up, I'm sorry for this conversation, but, but I, I, you know, panic set in a week ago.
John?
Is the 3rd somewhat cheaper or is it 3rd, 4th and 5th are always probably the same?
They're, they're pretty much the same. I think the 4th you may, the 3rd, 4th, we, what happens is it's efficiency because like J&amp;M displays, they have the 3rd open, right, or they may have the 3rd open. The 4th, their crew is going down the road to Nikusa or somewhere, or Nishkoro. So they're, they're just, they're, they're in the area, so they, they stay overnight. And generally, what happens is when you have a contract, they, they know what they're doing year after year. And then if they have someone fall off on the 4th, because, you know, a lot of, a lot of 4th of July festivals and fireworks find a funding struggle, they are the ones canceling because they can't fund the fireworks anymore. If you have that relationship, you can kind of be first in line to get that spot versus, you know, arguably to get somebody to come in and do it, you're talking having to triple our budget and, you know, for them to even pick up the phone for the 4th without that longer-term relationship.
And then go to Green Lake to see the show on the 4th, because the Green Lake show is, from what I understand, quite a good show over the lake. Never actually seen it myself because I watched the Ripon one. So...
This up is a motion because I, I just don't think there's the support, but I will say if there ever was interest, I think that fireworks are horrible for the environment, animals hate them. I, I'm actually not even...
Like, we gotta make a decision, Lud? That's the only concern about trying, you know, so...
But you got authority to lock in on the 4th.
Okay.
4th is still what you're looking for, but if you can't find it, you gotta make the call they're telling you.
Okay.
The 3rd, correct?
So your motion, y'all...
The 4th, a mo.
John's, sir. John's motion is to pursue the contract for the 3rd.
Yeah. Pursue the 3rd.
The 3rd, please.
So please secure that contract. All right, fireworks on July 3rd?
At Murray Park.
At Murray Park? Correct, at Murray Park?
Yep, that's fine with me, that I can see him, yeah.
All those in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
There will be an upcoming public information meeting in April about that project. We'll get information out, but that project is being planned and there will be some public information on it. In addition to that...
All right, so the other thing I will mention tonight is the upcoming, come on, never set my calendar up on this computer.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Would anyone like to make a motion?